On this capital sales tax project, am I correct in saying that it was supposed to be done in order? And the order is on you?
The priority list?
Yeah, we have the three different categories. Priority one, priority two, and then those additional projects get a certain amount of revenue.
And what project have we completed?
Steve, you want to address the specifics of the question? I think the projects that we've addressed were the ones like the CAD, the equipment purchases.
To answer your question, bond counsel advised that we needed to do them and get the priority one and priority two before we go to priority three. But that was all reason for the MBCon study. It was determined the shovel readiness. And for example, the fire EMS headquarters is the number one priority and number one item listed in priority two. But it is further away from being shovel-ready than some of the others. So we don't have to wait on that project to be completed before we start the one below it and so forth. That's why we're trying to get as many of these going as we can during the timeframe. Does that explain it a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit, yes. But have we completed any yet?
We have completed the purchase of the radios. Uh, sorry. I'm trying to pull it up. I didn't... I'm sorry. Um... Was that my presentation last week? I'll have it up in just a minute.
So may I just ask, what is the next project on your list if you're going down the order?
We're doing a number of them at the same time. We have already done the purchased all the radiars. That was the very first thing. We have already encumbered obligated funds for the South Lynch's Fire Department truck. We are soliciting quotes on and getting the specs together for the repeaters for the fire station, uh, fire radios. We are getting the information together for the generator that's early in priority two. We are, um... There's a lot of things happening at one time.
Councilman Miller?
I'll have my list.
I think the question is as relates to the proposal from last week, Steve, was the priority, not so much the priority, but the spending of the remaining proceeds from the $6 million that we made available. We're not changing or not asking to change anything. It's we're asking to address the remaining proceeds from the $6 million that we secured.
Right.
That's what we're asking. And me and all those projects were already begun and the ones that were completed. We're just asking for the blessing of counsel that we can proceed to keep all of the projects moving in a manner in which is efficient for the entire capital project sales tax initiative.
Okay. And I guess my one good question is what is the next project that we're working on now?
All right. It goes back to that list, Steve. This basically, we have $6 million. It's on the screen. Is it like $3 million or something left? I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Here are the ones that have already been done. We got $6 million in band money. We paid off the P-25 radios. We paid off the King Street Band for their public service building. We have obligated the money for the South Lynch's Fire Department because it takes 12 months to build. We've obligated the money for the five ambulances. We've reserved the 5% administrative amount to cover financing, MBCon study, legal fees, et cetera. We've already encumbered, obligated the generator design for the emergency generators for this building, the EOC, and the recovery center. So that leaves $2,627,000 and some change to spend. Whoa, excuse me. Got one too many. All right. So we have the remaining priority one projects. They're at some point, they're all at some point already in the process. So they're moving. The CAD design, the repeaters, the EOC computers, E-911 dispatch stations, two of them. We need $810,000 for that, but we're only going to need about $742,000 in the next 12 months, or seven months, before we get the bond money. So if we hold that money out of the 2.6, then we can do these priority two project startups or get them going. We spent $106,000, give or take, on the fire EMS headquarters. That gets us the engineering, some design work, gets it ready to be built. We obligate, we've got quotes out, quote requests out from six brush trucks for the fire department. We're with Jim Moore, the new EMD director. We're moving the generator project. And I want to give Jim Moore props because we, the county had missed the deadline in that grant, but with his connections with South Carolina EMD, they're allowing us to get an extension, even though that money's been available. King Street Public Safety Building, King Street, Richard Cream tells me he needs about $300,000 to $400,000 over the next seven months. The South Lynch's Fire Department would need their buildings. There's a remainder of $146,000. We would see Greeleyville and Lane projects for $50,000 to get their design work, engineering, whatever done. We could get Hemingway project completely done. The Stucky Water is $154,000 match. We need to hold on to that. So there's 1.917. So to summarize it, we got $6 million. We've spent or encumbered 3.3. We have $742,000. We'll take care of all the priority one projects. At the end of seven more months, those, all priority one projects will be done, complete, done, finished. Priority two projects, we would spend 1.9 million on that. You would have the, uh, South Lynch's project would be complete. The Hemingway project would be complete. We would be well underway in the King Street project, the fire EMS project. We would have money flowing to Greeleyville and Lane, and one Stucky project would be absolutely completed. So what we asked you for was, all right, what's next? If you all are happy with this... Whoa, so I went back one too many. Where are you? What happened to my slide? If you're happy with the far right column here, now this was achieved by my day-to-day involvement with all the parties. We had all the internal people. We had Sheriff Gardner, Chief Swinton, we had Tiffany Cooks, and we had, well Renee wasn't here because of the death of her father, but we all sat around and we talked about, and we talked about how to allocate this money to get the priority two projects rolling. Because priority one has to really be done more or less first. So we kind of came up with this list based on all the information that was available. So all I'm asking in the what's next, if you're happy with that column...
I'm sorry. Could we go back to that St. Lawrence? What's, I didn't hear you say anything but St. Lawrence.
Okay. Because of the, because of the grant, the lawyer, excuse me, on the Stucky building and all that, and because of the money being invested in the fire EMS headquarters, there's just not enough money to spread everywhere. So that one is a way, it's not been engineered, it's not been designed, it's not... So these other projects weren't more ready.
But that's not to say, Councilman Miller, that once we get through the next five months or seven months, then when the other proceeds become available, then that project will, you know, be brought up to speed. We're waiting on the design information on the St. Lawrence EMS ambulance. But what we're trying to do now is just allocate the funds, the remaining funds from the $6 million.
The multi-agency training facility that will benefit the sheriff and the fire, I mean, we only got $6 million in band money to get the ball rolling on these projects.
What kind of timeframe could you give as it relates to St. Lawrence EMS ambulance endeavor? I mean, it was not close shovel-ready, a lot of stuff hasn't been done yet. What kind of timeframe do you think before that could be done and we can look at it as the priority to get that done?
Well, and you were out to the last meeting, so you missed part of this. Last summer, when we were getting the MBCon study done and we got their report and everybody had a chance to review that and look at it, we also had compass municipal advisors advising us on how to pay for this project, these 14, 20, whatever project. And their recommendation was to get a BAN, a bond anticipation note, which we got in the first of November of 2017. That money was just to get the ball rolling on the projects so we, so citizens could see their money being put to work. They also made that recommendation with the thought that after we had a full year of collections, which we will this May, we will have it for 12 months by the end of May, then we would be in a better position to go out and get more attractive financing terms for the full 14 and a half million or whatever it is. So the BAN was only meant to give us for 12 months maximum. Well, we got it in November, so we've already used November, December, January, February, March, five of those months. So we're only talking about seven more months before, probably max, before we'll have the remaining amount of the money and we can do it. There's only so many projects that we can balance at one time because here's the thing about the St. Lawrence EMS station, as well as there's a couple of rural fire stations. In the what's next slide, you'll see, it was MBCon's opinion, it's my opinion, that when we bid out the fire EMS headquarters, because it's a $4 million project, we need to bid out these smaller projects too, to get, to maximize the amount we can get bank for the buck. Because if we got to pay somebody to design a small EMS station and a small rural fire station separately, their fees are going to eat into what we can spend on the station. There's only $327,750, I say only, that's a lot of money, but the ambulance is now $150,000. So you're looking at a $180,000 building. We don't want to cut into that in any way, shape, or form. So that's part of the reason it's, when we bid out the fire EMS headquarters, it's MBCon, and it would be my recommendation that they be bid together to maximize what we get for the fees that were assigned.
Steve, you know, I understand if some projects is in priority one and you've done necessarily one or two in priority one, but the next one down on that list is not shovel-ready, you would go down to two. One that is shovel-ready, you just go ahead and jump on that one. That's understandable. But I was under the impression, and I think this was a lot of people thought, when you prioritize them, one in priority one, one, two, three, four, five, then you go to two, one, two, three, four, five, that you would start getting them shovel-ready so you could proceed in that priority order. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought it was going to be, and that was a lot of citizens thought that it was going to be done that way. And I understand if they're not shovel-ready, it doesn't make sense. They're just there with all priority ones when there was some up and lower down is not shovel-ready and some of the two is.
Perhaps I'm confused. I'm not sure what I'm missing because our priority one projects in the list I was provided will be done within the first year.
But I'm not talking about that. But while it's being done, you said not all in priority one will be done before some is done in priority two, right? If the priority two is shovel-ready, before the next one in the order in one is ready, you would go down and...
If you look at your screen, all priority, all priority one projects, you know, the $3 million or $2,600,000 that's still, we have available to spend, okay? We're spending it on the finishing up the priority one project, okay? While that's happening, because there's design work, there's engineering, the CAD system, all that sort of stuff, is it, you just don't go buy these things off the shelf. So while this is being done, we're also doing, working on this list. I, I, I'm confused because we're talking about having, Mr. Paisley has asked for pros and cons while the internal people on what to do about the fire EMS headquarters, okay? We're working on that. Let me, if I could, okay? Chief Swinton has provided me with the specs, which we are getting quotes on the brush trucks, and we're working on them, okay? We're working on the generator. I'm working with King Street on their building. I'm working with South Lynch's. Hemingway, I just finally told them last week, call the councilmen because they're ready to go. They've been waiting. Stucky Water, I've met with them, okay? There's things going on multiple projects, at least a dozen, so I'm not sure...
Don't worry about it. It's taking up too much time. I'll, I'll meet with you one day and it's, take your, what I thought I heard you say earlier.
Right.
I think that's what it was, Councilman, was I don't think that that came, but was interpreted or was stated.
Right.
In other words, we kind of got it lost in translation. But the bottom line here is, what we're only asking is, we had a certain amount of money that we were able to secure because we did not want to, or we could not reasonably and, you know, sufficiently request all of the bond money without having a year of tax receipts. So we would have a reasonable idea of what we were, what we would receive. So we got $6 million and we've gone, you know, we're just demonstrating or showing what the $6 million has been spent for up to this point. And we got the remaining amount. And before we proceeded, we wanted to give the blessing of counsel that with these remaining dollars, this is how we're going to move, going to spend or allocate these remaining dollars. Now, as far as the St. Lawrence and the other projects that aren't listed only to the multi-agency training, the St. Lawrence EMS ambulance, just because they're not being allocated any money at this current time, it doesn't mean that once we get all the money that they, that project may get completed before because it's an ambulance purchase and it's an addition. And so it very well, probably will be completed before some of the other projects that may be listed here. The reason why we did that was because some of the projects that are listed here, you know, they're, we needed that kind of seed money to get them to a point to where they won't be held up.
Sure. Well, I guess with me looking at this, and I guess you have your way of doing this, but if I'm looking at Hemingway, oh, $427,500 versus St. Lawrence, which is a $100,000 more, how do we just jump over St. Lawrence and go down to Hemingway?
Because St. Lawrence, I mean, there's no design, the design and engineering has not been completed. Hemingway is shovel-ready to go. They're, they're just waiting for this, for us to be able to release the funds to them. They, they have everything ready. They're ready to move.
My question would be, you know, since everything was voted on the capital sales tax, why wasn't St. Lawrence ready to go?
Because we're not, we haven't secured the architect and engineers to do that analysis. They, they have some work on St. Lawrence, but as you see in the study that was done by MBCon, and as what Steve was alluding to earlier, we need to procure an architect engineer to design these smaller projects, which is like the St. Lawrence, and that would be included in the fire EMS headquarters proposal.
Okay. Just a closing remark for me. I would think that if we are talking about safety and whatever's good for the community, I would think that since we don't have an EMS building in that area and we've had a couple, and I'm not saying that the ambulance took long, we've had a couple deaths because the ambulance couldn't be out there at one time. I would think that we would prior, put a priority on this and work with this EMS, St. Lawrence Fire Station.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. So what we need is a, I guess, blessing or a motion accepting the recommendation that will allow us to proceed with the expenditures of the remaining $6 million, 2.7 million. It's been a motion. It's been moving properly second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose is the same? All right. Now, the next item that we remain, that remains on the agenda from the whole business is the administrative financial procedures then. And I think at the last point, the motion was that it was going to be referred, I guess, to the special committee. And since that time...
We had, we had no time. We hadn't scheduled any, so...
So you had to schedule. All right.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to table the chair's shift and then put back on the agenda to a special committee makes this recommendation.
Okay. I guess I'm at, my question is, is there, is there a plan for the special committee to, regarding this?
Yes, sir. It's only been a week. We only had a week, about two weeks, and we haven't scheduled a meeting. We can schedule a meeting at this time that we found.
All right. It's been moving properly second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose is the same? The ayes have it, so... Now, I think Madam Clerk has indicated that she will hold the members of council regarding the special committee meeting. And hopefully, and by that time when y'all schedule it, I'm hopeful that we'll have the information regarding the Shavers Recreation as well, so we can present that at the same time.
Okay.
You have the authority policy that you, who has spoken to you?
No, I haven't received one.
I'm not playing fast, though, at the time of...
Oh, I got an email from our attorney that Linda Edwards is being contacted, so I'm kind of like waiting on our attorney.
Not waiting on me. I sent it last week.
What? She responded that she was not there.
But she has the information.
I know, but I made that same, she, she was sent to her last week.
But she has the information.
Yeah.
Now, I guess what, what I want to make sure, and I think I understood, understand what we're doing, there's going to be a meeting that's going to be scheduled to address the administrative financial procedures policy.
Right.
All right. And I think what, I think, Council, you were talking about the, that person.
The chair representative report that people have other, other policy that's supposed to come out, and she never receives it, so I'm just going to know it. All of the detail with that saying about just that one policy.
Well, I think since people have, there is available, we should do all of them together. She is the labor attorney of the state.
But I guess if the information is not available, I, I would hope that we would not hold up the special committee meeting because we got two issues that are ready to be addressed. We have all that information, and then again, we would want to hopefully be able to bring the information regarding the Shavers Park as well.
Yeah, that'd be fine, and we asked the clerk to schedule a time with Ms. Linda Edwards. Then we'll know when we can...
All right. Here is nothing else? There's nothing else on the agenda? Anything else to be coming before the body, before we proceed? Mr. McGill, I recognize you.
Mr. Chairman, is, would it be out of order for me to possibly ask a quick question concerning the second, reading the order number 2018-006?
No, certainly not. Yeah. You can go through.
Yeah, Ben McGill from the Bloomingdale Community. I know I wasn't here at the first meeting, at the office set. My question is simply this. I know approximately four years ago, the citizens of Waynesboro County addressed this particular order to change form of government, and my question is simply this. Is this something that has been generated again by citizens of Waynesboro County, or when did this, this issue come up again from the questions put on the ballot for November?
I can't help it.
Okay. And what kind of prompted me to ask this question is simply this. When the ordinance was read by the county attorney and supervisor asked for a show of hand, a vote of the show of hand, we were a bit tempted about raising... and supervisor asked for a show of hand, a vote of a show of hand, uh, we were a bit tempted by raising our hand.